The United States of America, to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have some meeting minutes to approve. That is from May 12, 2014, those are any scheduled couple meeting minutes. If there haven't any additions or corrections, I'll be looking for a motion to have those approved, please.
I'd make motion to approve minutes.
Motion on the floor by Matt.
I'll second him.
And second by Donnie. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Agenda this evening. If you have any additions or corrections.
Not at this time, but not any additions.
We'll be looking for a motion to have the agenda approved this evening.
Make motion to approve the agenda.
Motion on the floor by Matt.
I'll second it.
And second by Donnie. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. First thing on the agenda, we have Morrison Tony Sherps candidate, Mr. Daniel Russell.
Welcome.
And I want you to keep us in the school.
In the loop. Well, good going, Dan. Good.
Good.
I know most of you guys, but just kind of give you a little spiel about myself and why I'm running, what I think I can do. First, you know, I'm born and raised in Platteville, went to school years. Graduated in ninety-three and then I went up to Brainerd Community College, got my law enforcement degree, went on to Hibbing, got my skills portion. And right out of school, I didn't go into law enforcement right away. I did a little bit, helped Steve a little bit here and there, dances and stuff. And then in ninety-eighty, hired me part-time for the city. I worked there four years. Then in oh-two, Paul Cheed hired me full-time at the county. Currently, I'm the senior canine handler at the county. Been there twelve years. I've been involved in all the areas, you know, that entails, Sheriff's Office, Golden Water, transports, you know, corrections, just bay of, all the stuff that you deal with. I'm a senior deputy also, so, you know, one of the older guys around there. And of course, Wetzel's retiring, so it's a good time if we're gonna do it, if we have to try it. This is where I'm at. Well, three things that I think that could be changed a little bit through the county. First is narcotics. Every week, you open up the record again this week. It's a full page, if not page and a half, two pages from the crime, drugs, drugs, drugs. And I feel it's getting out of hand. And I think there's something, we have to be more proactive. You know, we can't sit back and just let it, you know, keep going the way it is. Well, four years ago, Sheriff Wetzel, we had two people on the task force. And at that point, he turned one of them over and put them onto the patrol side, so there's only currently one person assigned to the task force. I feel that should be changed or re-structure that, somehow restructure it, sit down, figure it out to get two guys on there for sure. We need to get a couple guys out in the, you know, undercover, working, trying to get this under control.
Dan, is that in cooperation with other organizations?
Yep.
Yeah, one person that works in Morrison County.
From our sheriff's department. There's one from PD.
Okay, I got it.
And it's St. Hall PD, Stern County, Todd County, Benton County. There's like seven or eight different entities that are tied together. So, I mean, they do work together, but I feel we need to, you know, maybe start concentrating on Morrison County a little bit more. Second thing, it's pretty near and dear to my heart as a youth. I have three kids, of course, young, in school. And one thing I think Chair, Chief Henneken started over there was that satellite office. I think that's just a great thing. I went over and talked to the school board and they love it. Mr. Addy loves it. You know, he can come and go. They gave him just a little office area. You guys probably saw it. You know all about it probably, but I think it's just a great thing. And I think it can be implemented throughout the whole county, you know, in all the schools, Swanville, Upslaun, you know, the ones that are out in the county without a police department. I think that's just a cheap way. And that gets kids involved with it. Deputies, you know, talk to them a little more, one-on-one, so they're not scared, scared of the, scared of the cops. I want them to be friends with the cops, not too scared of them. And the second thing that he does over here at Holy Trinity is a healthy learning choices. It's an AID program, involves law enforcement, community corrections, public health. They come in, you know, different days. That's just another way to come into the school and get involved with the kids at their level, you know, talk to them. And the final day, of course, we come and do a canine demo. Thirteen comes in and does stuff. So, it is pretty cool. And I think it works. Kids love it. So, I think it can be implemented throughout the whole county and the school. And the last thing, of course, is technology. That's an ever-changing thing, as everybody knows. We do have a great system there at the county. LETG is what we use for records management and CAD part of it. So, it's a great system, but there's some areas, you know, that I think we could be a little more up to date. Make it easier for the deputies and also dispatch. Just a few things that could be updated. So, in a nutshell, that's kind of what I'm running. You guys all know, I've been on the first response for twenty-one years, fired for twelve, peers line. I give back to the community and I just feel, you know, I'm the most, I feel I'm the most common sense candidate we have, but I'm not talking them guys down in no way. But, you know, I run a farm a little bit and been in business, so I know what it takes and, you know, not the fight on the three million that they run over there.
Forty?
Not quite, but, so, you know, if there's any questions, if not, I'll...
Dan, you guys plan on in the future getting a mid-year, I guess, I don't know, another canine unit involved in the sheriff's department?
Uh, we do have two.
You do have two, no, who carries the other one?
Uh, Sherping.
Oh, Sherping.
Well, last year when my other dog died, actually directed a nice article and we got donations. We got enough money to get another dog, so we got two.
Oh, okay.
So, there is two currently. And that would be the toughest thing. If I would get elected, you know, I'd have to turn them, give them up, but, it wouldn't, it was a good dog.
Danny, what happens with your dog if you do get elected?
I have to give them, you know, I'll give them up.
He carry a canine anymore?
Oh, yeah. I mean, to a deputy next time. You know, I put them out if somebody wanted to do it, you know, offer it.
Yep.
Hopefully, somebody has enough energy to do it on there. It's, I think it's an asset.
You could be the first sheriff that has a canine. Make a little office for him.
No, I know with everything you've done in the past, in my opinion, you've done a phenomenal job. You continue to do that. And I wish you the best of luck with your first sheriff.
Yep, good luck with everything. I know you get a lot of support. And, yeah, good luck.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Keep us in the loop.
There it is.
Eric, we have a golf course shelter donation. Scott, do you want to give a little insight on that?
Sure. I was approaching, actually, I'm doing from a city standpoint, what we can do to help them. Michelle Witte, there's a benefit for Michelle Witte and having her, she's been diagnosed with dementia. And they are trying to put together a park walk benefit. People can come from the surrounding area and what the, what the goal is, they would like to do the donation of the shelters, golf course, and they would start and end there. And they just do, I talked with Eric, law enforcement, and everything would be okay in that perspective. But they'd start about one o'clock, have everyone down at the shelters and do a walk. I'm not sure the route that they want to take yet.
They were gonna work that out with Eric, right?
Yep, yep. But Eric's on board with it and, but, once again, it's a benefit. Bring your dog. Everything is kind of organized and things like that. It's, I think it'll be a good, good thing for...
Daniel's not here. We don't have it. Rent it or...
It's open. It's open. Not that day, it's the twenty-ninth of June.
Are they looking for bowl shelters?
Yes.
Okay, Daniel, have they talked to him and asked him if he understands that data?
What kind, sorry. What kind of turnout are they expecting? Do they have a rough number?
They do. It's hard to tell. It's very hard to tell, I guess. There hasn't really been something like this.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna say, it's kind of a unique...
Yeah, I think it'll be a good thing because many events, we have to tell them that's where you get out to or, you know, so I think it'll be beneficial to the people.
I think it would be a good thing. He's on the fire department for us. He's involved in the community, started new business here in the community.
I think the motion is going to the shelters.
Second by Donnie and second by Mike Gold. Please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. And we wish those folks well with their endeavor that, that they're going through it. We have a St. Joseph's Church gambling license. And that is... That was a one-day?
Correct.
For August third. And that took us...
I make a motion that we approve the gambling permit for St. Joseph's Church. Motion on the floor by Mike.
I'll second that.
Second by Donnie. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Just kind of FYI, Rick Nolan's mobile office will be here at City Hall, May twenty-ninth, eleven AM.
So, Thursday.
Thursday.
So, anybody's interested, has any comments or concerns that they do wish to talk with Rick about, or some of his staff, where they will be here eleven o'clock.
He stopped by last year, too, didn't he?
I believe so.
Should be coming at nine though, right, Harold? Coffee time?
That'll be a good time.
Next thing we have here is our Peers Lions Club, which is their fiftieth anniversary this year. I would like to say congratulations.
Thank you.
Everybody. Have a little proclamation here I would like to read and go through. And this is an official proclamation. And it is declaring, June twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen, Peers Lions Club Month. And it is, "Whereas the Peers Lions Club International Organization, which is chartered Lions Club chapter in Peers, on June twenty-sixth, nineteen sixty-four, good year, see you overboard." "Whereas this year marks fifty years of service by the Peers Lions Club to the community of Peers. And whereas Lions Club, Lions Clubs are organized to promote the principles of good government, take an interest, an active interest in civic, cultural, social, and moral welfare of the community. And whereas the Peers Lions Club has encouraged service-minded members to serve their community without personal finance, regard, and promote high ethical standards in our community." Says, "Industrial professionals, public works, and private endeavors. And whereas Peers Lions Club will celebrate, celebrate its fiftieth anniversary on June eighteen, two thousand fourteen. There before resolve that I, Toby Egan, Mayor of the City Peers, declare the month of June to be Peers Lions Club Month. I will sign this date, the twenty-seventh of May, two thousand fourteen." And I guess I would just like to comment a little bit about the Lions Club organization. And to meet the Lions Club, I mean, I've lived in town here for nearly thirty years. And it's not just the Lions Club name that makes this organization special. It's the people who are involved in this organization that really makes it special with our community. I see people out working all sorts of community events. Just very dedicated individuals. And on behalf of the city, I'd like to say congratulations and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you. As part of that, too, Toby, the club would like to extend an invitation to the, to the city council, city staff, to join us for our fiftieth anniversary picnic that we're having on June eighteenth. This is an invitation to, to everybody, to, to come to the park. We're starting with the social hour at six. We'll have a picnic-style dinner at seven, and a short program at eight. There'll be music and following that. So, please come, bring spouses, partners, friends, whoever with you. And that goes to city staff as well. Scott, so you are certainly invited. Linda, city treasurer, treasurer as well. And this is to the city council. We're also extending it. I know some of you are members of the fire department and passed along the invitation to the fire department too. So, we'd like to have you come join us for that celebration. Well, thanks for the invitation, Lorraine. We appreciate it. And if you don't mind, we're gonna get a picture of you signing.
I was just gonna say, there shouldn't be a photo op.
So, we get a little PR out of this deal.
Looks very more important.
Let's put a hairband shirt on.
There we go.
If we didn't, we'd have to cover your hair a little more. A lot of gray.
We've been trying to walk that.
You'd be a fifty, you know, with a freaking shirt, you know.
Using the same stuff you've been using.
Oh!
Why don't we also write a word, one of those two words?
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you so much, Mr. Terry.
None of it.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Toby. I'm talking to him in here.
We appreciate you guys.
Yep, you bet.
Is there a charter member still around?
No.
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 Anywhere.
We got seventy, seventy-two members now.
Yeah. Big organization.
A lot of them are not age. But, yeah, it's a good organization. Thank you very much.
Thanks again.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Who are you worried about, man? Did I have you slither one?
We have our requests from, I believe it's Commercial Club or fireworks donation request. And I think we tabled that at the last.
Yeah.
That's Oktoberfest.
Yep. Okay. That is for two thousand dollars. I believe their goal is to raise five thousand. Okay.
And the Lions are conducting a raffle.
Oh, okay.
Trying to raise the rest of the money.
Okay.
What they're doing.
Anybody have any comment?
I'd make a motion that we...
What do we normally, before we make a motion, what do we normally, every year, we do something for the, for the Oktoberfest, right?
Oktoberfest, yeah.
What, what is that normally? Is it a thousand?
That's two thousand.
Two dollars.
Right.
But this is an additional.
This is an additional.
Yep, for fireworks here. Yep.
Yep.
I didn't know if we had or not, or what was that, that's what I was asking.
Yep, that's exactly right, Dan. I'd make a motion that we donate the two thousand dollars towards the fireworks display. There's a motion on the floor from Mike. Can we get a second?
I'd second that.
Second by Matt. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
And I'll thank you very much for that, too. We don't do the fireworks every year either.
No.
Only special occasions. And this year was a special occasion for this fiftieth year for Lions.
Absolutely.
Thirty-first year for...
Oktoberfest.
Yes. You should also ask some of the pull tab organizations around, because it might be some extra money around, too.
Yeah, if there's any creative ideas or creative ways to...
We've tapped almost all the resources.
You guys are going at it steady, so, no, that's good.
We appreciate it very much.
But if there was any way to raise money every year, boy, I mean, that's, it's a nice display. It's nice to have fireworks in town. I know there's a lot of people that go out of town when they're not available here.
That's right.
Yep.
Thanks, Lorraine.
Thanks, Lorraine. Next item on the agenda is Energy Insights. That's commercial rebate proposal for Chris Witzel's business and industrial park. Scott, you kind of want to...
Sure. Yep, and I'm actually kind of new to Energy Insights. I'm still trying to dig into that more stuff. But the state sets a goal for cities to try and become more energy efficient and things like that. And each year, it's one point five percent is the goal that we need to actively reach. And with that, there, you know, we look at different businesses in our community that use a lot of kilowatt hours, is what it comes down to. With Chris's new shop, he put in energy-efficient lighting, as far as I understand. And I'm just working through Energy Insights right now in regards to that. So, he would potentially save with these seventeen thousand four hundred twenty-six kilowatt hours. Now, I don't know exactly, like I said, I'm still trying to figure that stuff out, what in percentage that is. You know, potentially, it's, you know, a fifteenth of the way there or something in that line. So, you know, like I said, once again, the goal of the city is to try and reach out to businesses and trying to help them. And with that, we have the rebate. That rebate cost is seven hundred and fifty-seven-five.
For Chris's project.
For Chris's project.
And this has been approved by Energy Insight already?
Correct, yes. And this would be, there's only maybe another half an hour to an hour to wrap up the rest of the project, so.
Okay.
And that's a one-time rebate amount?
Correct.
Okay.
That's a one-time.
What other businesses are eligible? How, who decides that?
And...
Okay, okay. And they, then they just approach?
Yep, and actually, and, and once again, I'm trying to figure this stuff out, but we hired Energy Insights two years ago now. And they actually go out and seek these businesses. They do a research and find out how much they're using. Like Tom Building would be an example.
Oh, yeah. Anything with coolers?
INH, INH Properties, is that Camden Extreme?
No, you mean down at the bowling alley, running machines and coolers and stuff in there.
With him, it's a brand-new building that's gone in. How was he in?
I believe in one, one process first started.
Right, but there wouldn't be a rebate for energy yet, because he didn't use any energy. Or is that, me thinking backwards?
Yeah.
Going forward. It would be somebody...
I don't know if they prioritize that back, or if they can look at how many he...
They look at how many.
But he's a brand, he's, I'm, I'm, so I'm saying, like, if we're gonna pick the bowling alley, their lights are already there and they would be, they'd be putting in energy-efficient to save energy.
Yes, that's...
Him being a brand-new business and building, he'd put it all in to start with, so there really isn't a rebate there. There's not the incentive to have the bowling alley put new lights in.
Right, but even if he put in qualified things.
That would qualify.
You know, and with the construction, it's new, it's qualified for the rebate.
And then he gets...
So, therefore, going back, yeah, that's, it's efficient.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they could go back if they take two or three months. I know what you're saying, Don. Yeah.
I'm not, I, I think it's a great deal. And if, and if, most time, you put an energy-efficient in, it costs you more money to put it in.
Sure.
So, the rebate is to try to get some of that back. But when you're talking already a brand-new business, so for example, in ten years, what he's got now is not gonna be energy-efficient. You can say it is, but in ten years, you know how everything changes? Like a street light's going to be LED lights.
Yeah.
So, he goes back through and now all of a sudden, he puts in something more energy-efficient while he's already got a rebate. Unless there's another rebate program and stuff. That's why I'm asking that.
So, with his new installation, he could run with a conventional lighting and et cetera. With that, that's how much would be used. But with an energy-efficient one, this is the forecast of how much we would save.
Kind of based on...
Versus...
Versus one of the six conventional standard or whatever.
There's a lot of, this is why two years ago, we hired Energy Insights. I mean, our staff can handle the residential stuff. It's like your new refrigerator, microwave. And I mean, those are pretty easy. When it gets into the commercial end, there's so many stipulations they have to follow. And we are paying Energy Insight.
Yep.
To do that.
Yep.
But it also, you know, we have to try and meet this state recommendation of one point five percent saving or whatever. We are a power company.
Well, it's taken a little bit of a grip off local business owners. I mean, they, they have to take advantage of everything that they can. And if the program's available.
Yeah, you know, I'm not sure, you know, I mean, just looking back on what the program cost us the first year we were in, it was extremely expensive. And we go back the second year, and I think we're in the second year of this now, we anticipated that a lot of these costs would eventually start to go down. And I would say that's probably gonna be the case. But, yeah, that's why we hired this, this company, was to help us out with the commercial end of things. But I know what you're saying, Don. Yeah.
Just to make it further.
What you're thinking, when you first build, wind up with the more efficient stuff in right away.
Well, I'm assuming that's what he's done. But how do you, how do you then determine that, that it was a seven hundred and fifty-dollar rebate when?
He had to put the new, he had to put the new lighting in.
It's in now.
He put it in.
He put it in when he built.
Oh, he put it in when he built.
That's what I'm assuming, right?
That's what I'm assuming, too. Like I said, I'm...
So, he's not putting in new fixtures?
And that's why, you know, that's why for us to determine it would be, for our staff would be just, he's, Energy Insights is making them follow through the hoops. So, we're not just giving money out on a whim. I mean, there's credentials that have to be followed.
So, you hired them to make sure that it's done right. Right. I understand. I thought you were saying that he was gonna upgrade his lighting though. Okay.
But I know where Donnie's talking from.
When he built Blue.
Say, the bowling alley.
Right.
What incentive is there for?
That's what I thought that program was, is for the, for business that's been there, you know, and, and now...
It is for both ways.
But if you're putting energy-efficient things in from the get-go, you're still saving.
Yeah.
The question is, is how do you know how much they physically save?
That's why they do, that's why...
Because in average, I mean, I could say, well, I'm gonna put in the worst energy bulb possible. And but instead, I'm going with this, and then I'm gonna get a bigger rebate. Calabower, you know?
I don't think it necessarily goes...
But I don't know how they go that far with that.
The energy-efficient equipment that goes in is much more a higher cost than what standard.
Oh, correct.
So...
I know that's my lighting that I go for.
And, and, yeah.
But I'm already there. That's why I was asking, how do you determine that program?
Yeah, but I guess it's no different than a residential, as to where if I buy new bulbs or let's say I even build a new house and I put an energy-efficient fluorescent bulb in, or, you know, I gotta have a high efficiency furnace or whatever, I'm gonna get a rebate for that. Basically, we operate the same way.
No, but I'm not with the C.
His power comes from Minnesota Power. So, he's not on our grid.
Yeah, okay. That's what we looked at, tried to...
So, they'll look at, yeah, but it'll be through Minnesota Power. I'm suing whoever they own.
They have to offer.
Right.
They do, yeah. That's why I know...
So, is there anything we have to do on...
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the Energy Insights rebate proposal for Chris Witzel's shop.
Motion on the floor by Matt. Can we get a second?
Second.
Second by Donnie. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. We have a whole host of liquor license approval calls we need to do. I think what I'm going to do is just read these off, and then we'll make one motion to approve. If somebody's got a problem with one of these, let me know and we'll signal that one.
Okay, the way you have them listed here, just a quick question for Scott. Off sale is not Sunday off sale.
Oh, there is a Sunday.
Just Sunday liquor.
Sunday.
On sale, Sunday liquor, and then off sale.
Yep. First, we have Patrick's Bar and Grill, and that is on sale, Sunday liquor and off sale. We have Brickyard Bar and Grill, that is on sale, Sunday liquor and off sale. We have Pierce Ballroom, that is a three-two on-sale license. We have St. Joseph's Church, and that is a one-day temporary on-sale. That's three-two. I guess I'm not sure. I guess it doesn't have to be. Allegiant Ballpark, that is on sale. We have Booth Leonard's Bar, that is on sale, Sunday liquor and off sale. We have Boyd's Liquor, that is off sale. We have Oktoberfest, that is a one-day temporary on-sale license, and that is for the Lions Club. We have Golf Course, and that is a three-two license and Sunday liquor. And those would wrap them up.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I would, I, I guess I just want to mention that it is for Pierce Legion Ballpark, St. Joseph's Church. Toby had mentioned about three-two, and these do the actual...